Everybody for coming out today. It feels like a heatwave, it's torn. Didn't even need my scarf, so I do thank you for coming out today. Tyreya Bynum, he is another candidate for the first ward. Couldn't be here today, so I encourage you to look up his information there as well. But, well, we'll go ahead and get started. As Kim explained, our format and so forth, we'll just start out with introductory remarks for each of these segments, whether it's this or closing remarks with the questions. Two minutes for each, and of course, keep an eye on Kristi, our friendly timekeeper there. So, we'll start with Jenny Chadwick first, just opening remarks, two minutes.
Alright, thanks. So, I'm Jenny Chadwick, and I came to Columbia in 1995 to get my undergraduate degree in consumer and family economics, personal finance. Stayed here and worked for Landmark Bank for several years, and then had two girls. They are 14 and 11 now, and I stayed home with them for eight years. And during that time, I just got really engaged and involved in many different things in the community, including the Columbia Farmers Market. I ran a non-for-profit, little non-for-profit that promoted locally-owned businesses called Colors. Was a La Leche League leader, which was a breastfeeding support group that helps mothers breastfeed their babies. And became very involved in the True Falls Film Festival. And then I went back to work, and when I did, I worked for June Pitchford for three years for the county auditor. And recently, I returned back to graduate school, and I'm getting my master's degree in public health and journalism. So, I was inspired to run for city council because I wanted to be a voice of the people. No specific issues that I was running on, or changes that I wanted to make, but more to be a voice of the community, because I was so engaged and incorporated in many different aspects of the community, and continue to do so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Bill Easley, two minutes, sir, opening comments for us.
I'm with Jeff Stad against death penalty, and I've been with grassroots organization for quite a few years. I've done neighborhood stuff since 95. And we're trying to give back, we're trying to give back. We've worked with the community, tried to get kids off streets, and jobs, and stuff. And we need, we need watch our children. We need none of my family here, but I know a lot of people got children, grandchildren. And we gotta, we gotta watch them. And I like to see jobs come in. I just like to see, I like working better with the police, and schools, and help the city.
Okay, appreciate that. Well, we'll go on to some of the questions, either selected by the chamber, and then we'll open it up through the audience here a little later. But first, we'll start with Bill there. First question, I think you kind of touched on it in your opening remarks, but what do you see as the greatest need for the citizens of the first ward? And again, two minutes for this one.
Well, I think we need jobs. They haven't talked about jobs since the flood. And you don't need flood. You need jobs. Columbia only do this, a bill for students. Well, when they get out of school, they gotta have jobs. People gotta have jobs. And that's what we need, we need jobs. And that's, that's, that's the biggest part. They let horses get away, different companies, and they ain't doing nothing. We need jobs.
Very well, appreciate that. Alright, Jenny Chadwick, two minutes. Greatest needs for the first ward?
Sure. So, the first ward is the most dynamic and diverse ward in Columbia. It encompasses...
You're gonna stop it.
Thanks, I only had a percent. It encompasses the university, the downtown, the lowest-income neighborhoods in our community. They're out, one of the high schools, a lot of the middle schools and elementary schools. And so, we have as diverse of needs in the first ward as we have residents and community in the first ward. Some of the big things that I hear going door-to-door from the residents, though, is public safety. Are you having trouble hearing me?
No. That's, that's the way I am. Everybody else can hear.
Well, I want to speak up if you can't hear me. So, public safety is obviously a big issue in the first ward that they voice, that they want to increase. As a master student in public health, obviously, the healthy lifestyles is very important to me. Also, public transit systems are something that the first ward residents voices, that we need to improve our public transit system. And luckily, in August, that will take place, where we will be increasing the frequency of our public transit system. Another thing that they voice often is affordable housing. The city has a great program that helps with affordable housing. We had a summit a couple weeks ago to continue to hear the residents' needs and figure out where the best areas to allocate those resources are.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, question number two, I think you both touched on this already a little bit. Transportation infrastructure are certainly a concern in Columbia. Notice that streets are on a 60-plus-year replacement cycle. That's not sustainable. Bus routes are being revamped this fall, which was mentioned. Sewers are another infrastructure that have come to a head in various parts of town. What are some of your ideas for improving transportation and infrastructure needs in Columbia? I will start with Jenny this time.
Thanks. You know, obviously, the hot topic that I'm hoping that we get over to is the TIF right now. The city's meeting at four to talk about what they're proposing and bring out the numbers. You know, I'm learning as much as possible about the TIF and getting opinions from a diverse amount of people in the community to fully understand that we have to do something to improve our downtown infrastructure. It has to happen. And what that is, we're not sure. You know, Mathis said that it's the TIF, or Plan A, Plan B is no development, and we have to have a Plan C for the city of Columbia. So, as far as the public transit and, you know, pedestrian lifestyle, Columbia is in an amazing place. You know, we're one of the best cities in the nation as far as our pedestrian and bike ways, and I hope to see that increase, and we'll continue to support it. Funding is, is an interesting topic that I don't, I don't personally think I have enough information to give you the answer, and we'll continue to learn.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Easley, two minutes.
We need better, better bus system. We need, you can't get from one place to another, and it's terrible. I used to ride it. I haven't rode it for a few years. It's bad. You can't get to one place. You gotta walk, walk. There's handicapped people out there. And they, sometimes they don't stop when you want them. If you add a corner, or you wave them down, if you can't get to the corner, they should stop. They used to do that. But Columbia Transit, you can't get around, you can't get from one area to another. It's hard, it's harder. And that's why I just give up on it. And I'm, and it hurt me, it's hurt me getting around, but I mean, you gotta, they need overhaul. They need to look at it and overhaul it, get more buses. They got too many buses for the students. I seen them riding back to back, and you don't need that for students. You need, you need like regular people. They need more streets, they need more, well, I'm sorry. If I were mayor and city manager, I'd look at it real good. I'd do something, but I don't know. I don't have an idea, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Well, third question. It was recently announced that violent crime in Columbia is at a 20-year low. Yet citizens continue to be concerned about crime in our community. Mayor McDavid brought this up after some shots fired events, and there were some acute concerns there last year. What are your plans as a city, as a city council member, if elected, to make Columbia a safer place to live? And we'll start with you, Bill, this time.
Actually, I'd like to get the police from sitting there, get them out there, patrol them, and bicycles, motorcycles, different things, get them out. I don't like these roadblocks. That's against the law. They should be against the law. Never was when I was a kid. You gotta, they doing pretty good in this area. You can't stop crime completely, but it should be everybody concerned. You gotta, you got to get the people working with the police. And I don't know, I've seen some things I didn't like, but you got to, the police have got to be your friend. And you gotta be everybody's friend. And I just, we haven't had too much in Ward 1. We have a little bit from time to time, but if I was a police and city manager, mayor, I'd do something. I'd look at it. I'd get, I'd get more police. This town is getting big, and the city can't afford all the utilities. And you got to have jobs. And I don't know, I don't know. I'm just a one-layer person. You gotta, everybody's gotta work together. And I don't know. I know there's something that they can work out, and I like to see, I like to see something worked out. Because our whole town, and one of these days, somebody's gonna be shooting, and somebody's gonna get hurt. We don't want that, in any area.
Okay, appreciate that. Our next question, what's that?
It's her question. She has a question.
Oh. I lost track. I'd be glad to hear.
Can I have my...
Skip one.
First, we cut you off. That's a little much, isn't it?
No sabotage.
My little paper airplane to throw at you. It's definitely about building partnerships, but specifically to the question, the statistics show that crime is down. And so, that's really exciting for our community, and our community continues to be a really strong, thriving community. It's about strategically communicating the fact that our crime is down, that it's, we are worried about crime. Any crime is bad crime. We don't want crime. But, but our community is in a better place than it was. And I feel that with the strength of partnerships, that we can continue to be there.
Okay, great.
Oh, I'll stop now.
This, this, this next one, I'll give you both a chance. It is an important issue, though. Economic development incentives are continually a topic of conversation. What is your position on offering economic development incentives for startup, expansion, and/or attraction projects? And we'll start with Jenny this time.
Sure. You know, economic incentive projects have helped to create some of the really great projects that we have here, including the Tiger Hotel. There's a balance, like the community, the public sees community incentives to be a handout to the business community, and that they want to see the business community paying their own way, which is often a term that's used, especially right now, when we look at who's gonna pay for the infrastructure. So, you know, is the, the development worth the lack of public goodwill that we're, we're losing and giving that incentive? So, I can't say, it depends on the project and the development that it offers to the community.
Okay, great, thank you. Bill, two minutes.
Well, rent's high, the rent's high. We, the landowners should lower it, give people break, start our business. And I've seen so many buildings empty, ten-down houses, they're lowering their rent. Greed, greed's got them. The people who own them should lower, should lower the rent, sale, to get people started, to get in, to give them incentive. And that's what I would do. I would talk to mayor, manager, and other ward people. Give them a break, give them a break. And when they start making money, let them, let them contribute to, to the tax. You don't make a million dollars and not give something back, you don't do that. I've given back, and I'm poor. I've helped people. But that's what we need, we need these store owners, these places, lower the rent. Lower the rent. I know what I'm doing, though. I used to work in fast food. And I've seen some people just greedy. They're whether they lose, they're whether they keep their place empty, then the lower the rent, and have somebody in it for them. And that's silly, my boy.
Okay, thank you. Next question. There's been an obvious increase in student housing downtown. Maybe you noticed, maybe in like a few minutes about that. Yet we now learned that we don't have the infrastructure to accommodate info projects downtown. This was discussed a little earlier. City of Columbia is considering the establishment of a TIF district. Some business people and council members have instead suggested reevaluating utility rates and development fees, see if there's an appropriate market-based level for those. Chamber's Government Affairs Committee also has a local group that's been monitoring the TIF, which, more info on that later. Since that proposed TIF area would largely be within the first ward, it's very appropriate for your constituents there. So, please share your thoughts on the concept of a tax increment financing TIF district. Bill, we'll start with you this time.
Well, if you, I don't know what they would build there, but they have, I would, I would have transportation, go get it. And, and you just have to, because there ain't, there ain't too much housing. There's single housing, if you go out west of Providence, they got a lot of empty spaces. But I mean, you gotta have buses, transportation, if you're gonna do that. If you go out on the, they used to have turnaround out in Indian Hills. And now it's going out past that. To bring people in, you gotta have transportation, you gotta have transportation. And you got, it needs to be looked at. The mayor, city manager, and all the ward people. And it needs to be looked at real good, because they gotta have transportation. They can't be stuck out in the boondocks. And I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Jenny, downtown development, TIF, etc.?
Sure. So, downtown infrastructure, it's a public health issue. It's an economic development issue. Something has to be done to improve our downtown infrastructure. The city, Mike Mathis, is proposing here in 10 minutes, the plan for the TIF. There's a lot of people within the community that are speaking out against that TIF, and continuing to hear the different sides and, and the different details. I can't say that I'm, I'm for or against or ready to make that absolute statement at this time, but, you know, as Mike said, and I said earlier, you know, Plan A, he says is the TIF, Plan B is no development downtown. And again, I'll say, we need a Plan C for city, that the city can stand behind and support, and we need to get people on board to support a plan.
Okay, great. Well, that'll conclude my prepared questions. Got to everybody eventually. We'll open up to you and the audience. You have particular questions that we'll pose to the candidates. Wants to break the ice.
Sure. I was interested in the Tribune article about Chicago gangs, and I read the whole article, I think it was in Sunday's paper. I guess Michelle Obama came to a funeral of an honor student in Chicago, and that kind of opened up, she was, the student was shot accidentally by gang activity. And in reading the whole article, it appears that what I thought was the case, might be the case, and that is, the police know the core group of malfeasors, but perhaps, in case of Chicago, they, they came really hard down on that group, and, and said that, we'll come after you if you start more handers from the floor, and we'll go after your family. They really leaned hard on them, and put more police out, they put more police out at night. And that, and that helped. They're all, Chicago is concerned about whether they can keep that up or not, because it's costly. But it just seems like if there's a core group that everybody knows about, but you can't quite put your finger on them legally, maybe we should extend our legal reach a little bit.
So, how to direct the police to deal with gang activity and that sort of thing?
They identified the worst guys, and they've talked to them personally.
Okay, so, so police strategy.
We should read that article, it's a good article.
Okay. Jenny, we'll start with you this time.
So, the city has established a violent crimes task force, and they're looking into this specific thing and helping to give the council guidance on, on what we should do.
That's an issue. I had to take a friend to the emergency room at 2:30 one morning, and we stopped by to get some prescriptions for her, and then we heard shots on Providence, and so we went Broadway to go back home. Whoa, I didn't know that that was happening. Pretty innocent.
Jenny, is that what you meant to say then?
Yeah.
Okay. Bill, gang violence policing?
Well, like I said, they all gotta work together, the people and the police. And, well, everybody has to work together, and if you watch it, the descriptions, people differ on their description. And you got to cooperate with both sides, the police and the citizens, the ones that see what happened. You got to, you got to, or you don't solve nothing. And they have guys down there, got this part, shot back and self-defended. And it's got a bad reputation, but I think it's doing good. It's doing better. But I mean, you got to protect yourself, you got to protect yourself. I don't know, I don't carry a weapon, but I know how to protect myself, I can, I, I've been in places, and I had a lady with me, and I watched when she done something. And I thought if anybody bothers her, I can give her a big warthog. If you behave yourself, if you behave yourself, you can get help. I've been around with people all my life, and I know how to talk to them, I know how to speak to them, I know how to respect them. I never had to back off. We both respected each other, where I'm from. And that's what you gotta do. You gotta know when to turn around and walk, or go someplace. Lot of warthog, lot of warthog. You don't need to, you're shooting back at four, they ain't gonna solve it. You gotta use common sense. And the parents, it starts in the home, when they just two, three, six months old. You got to know, and I've heard too much bad language, and I, I've seen it.
Okay, appreciate that. Alright, well, other questions from the audience?
With regards to the TIF, if the community doesn't get behind the TIF, and the city can't do anything else, what's a suggestion for Plan C?
Yeah, Bill, start with you. Plan C on downtown development?
Well, just go back to the city. It goes back to city. They gotta do a better job. They, I've never been a law enforcement officer, but I got common sense. I know how to talk to people. Walk up to a house, walk up to a stranger, if they standing there saying something. You got to let them know that you don't wanna fight them. You gotta let them know that you're friends. And there's a lot of people don't trust, and we gotta get rid of that. We gotta get rid of, we gotta show, we gotta trust, faith in each other. And I'm in a good neighborhood, I've got good neighbors. I'm losing my neighbor. I'm losing too many. And I think you know something that pass and have. And they're good, they're good fighters, they're good fighters.
Okay, thank you. Jenny?
Sure. You know, it's a shame that the downtown infrastructure wasn't on the last bond issue, but we could propose a bond issue to pay for it. Utility fees could be increased to pay for the infrastructure, as it should. The, the people should really decide on, and get a voice in how it happens.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? I'll put one out there, I guess. Let's see. We found that the perspective of particular council members is very important as far as new proposed businesses in town. Couple of examples, the break time on grindstone, this may be difficult for some of the business community to interpret what policy going forward would be for things like that. The proposed CBX pharmacy down on the corner here, also kind of ended up being a difficult situation there. In the first ward, I think Amir Ziv, fellow photographer, had some cottage apartments, three hours on a double lot, had some difficulty getting that project through. As far as, you know, development that's acceptable, are there what conditions and what isn't? Could you give us kind of a general idea, whether on those examples or other things you might think of? We'll start with you, Jenny.
Sure. You know, Columbia's currently looking at their zoning. The company Clarion is reviewing that. Our zoning was written back, I think, in the 30s, and it hasn't changed since then. And there's some clear areas where certain development should happen, and we just need clearer rules for the people, so that we can know what should and shouldn't happen, and it shouldn't be so reflective of just what the council decides.
Bill, your, your comments on that?
Well, well, it goes back to billing and getting the jobs out there, and, you know, what person wants to build on that property. And I don't, I don't know. Every landowner, every spot has its spot. And they turn too many houses down before it's here, because we need housing. They got too many empty spaces. But we need jobs. There's a, I think that's up to each, each, each company where they want to build. I like to see a company come in, have 50, 100 people or something. We gotta get, we gotta get manufacturing back. We don't, we got too many of these places. It's getting hard for the college people finding jobs. And we gotta have jobs for these high school people. And that's where, that's where we got hurt when they started letting our jobs go overseas. That's, we should've gotten a horses company back in here. I don't know where they were located. Then they had Hallmark cards and stuff from Mexico went out. We gotta get manufacturing in here for, you know, these, these people know more.
Okay, gotcha. Any other questions from the audience?
So, in the first 60 days of being elected, what would be your top priorities? And then, this is a two-part question. Secondly, how, how are you planning on communicating with the business community and your constituents once, once elected?
Okay, I think Bill will start with you on that one. What'd you do in your first 30 days, and how to communicate with the business?
Well, you gotta go to them, talk to them, see what they want to do, see what they want built, where they want built. You gotta have an idea, is it big? Is it gonna be a strip mall? Or it's gonna take up two, three acres, four, five acres? You got to know, you can't just put a place in a small place. You got to know, know what you want. If it's a big place, then you gotta, you gotta go out, you gotta go out, and they gotta have transportation, gotta have transportation. And it can be done, it can be done. If they lower the rent, let, let somebody come in, say this guy here, maybe he wants to go in clothing, a Jewish store, and anybody. Well, what can you do? I had a company back, back home, it was vacant for years, two, two-star, had a lot of house, a lot of business place. They wanted $2,500 a month, and they sat empty. I thought I could go in there, rent it for five to a thousand dollars. I figured on car washing, change, change oil, glue, mount cars, it could've been done, it could've been done. And I laughed at them. I laughed at them. I said, I gotta pay the insurance, lights, heat, insurance, but you gotta be realistic. I used to work for Wendy's and Hardee's, I know what their overhead is. If they didn't make it, they shut down. And I mean... And I mean, you can't, you can't make no money if you've got a home empty, a business empty. You've got to lower that price. Make somebody want to come in. Make somebody want to come in. That's, that's, that's what I do. I get with the mayor, city manager, and, and other, other ward people and, and.
Okay, appreciate that. You're, you picked out the right guy for that sort of thing, too. Whether it be announced or not. Jenny, what you did in your first 30 days and then communicating with the business community ongoing?
Sure. You know, I'm not running for a specific project or to solve a specific problem. So in those first 30 days, I'm going to be taking in and learning so much that I definitely don't have something specific other than to really absorb what's going on. You know, I've asked Mathis, what can I do as a candidate to better prepare for, as soon as, you know, if I take office? And he said, from what I see, you're doing it, but keep doing it. So, you know, I'm going to as many meetings and communicating with as many people as I can, especially the residents of the First Ward. I'm running to be a voice of the people and to connect with them is, is what's really important to me. I'm very active on social media because I'm getting my dual degree in journalism and specifically it's strategic communications. So it's marketing and promotions. So I'm very quick to respond and I'm happy to attend any meeting or, you know, speak with you individually. So I, I just got business cards out, feel free. It's got my phone number, my email. You'll find that I'll contact you promptly if you, if you reach out to me. So as far as the business community, like, you know, this afternoon, the Columbia Apartment Association asked if I would come to their meeting and speak. And I did. Yesterday, I was at the Democratic Chili Supper. It's every day, it's something and I'm happy to do it. It's really exciting to get even more engaged in the community.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
You guys have mentioned just the importance, obviously, of having jobs in Columbia. Columbia currently has one of the lowest unemployment rates in the nation. So can you kind of elaborate more in terms of what in particular you're seeing as needing to improve in that area? Is it just that people aren't qualified for the jobs that are already in existence or that we don't have enough?
Okay, start with Jenny, job issues.
Sure, yeah. I mean, we did just come out with that data that we have a 4% unemployment rate. And I was told, and I haven't checked the accuracy of that, but that's, that we're actually 17th in the nation for unemployment for cities. So as far as, as job and employment, we're doing great as a city. And it's something to be really proud of. The First Ward specifically, the residents, they do need some training, some skills, some, we've talked about how they, you know, we have a career center, but it's, it's very far south of town. Like there's vocational skills that we could get people in the First Ward connected to so that maybe they can do, do those hands-on jobs.
Okay, great. Bill, you were talking about jobs earlier, elaborate on that?
We've got to know what you're going to do. What kind of product? Is it going to be sales or is it going to be manufacturing? And if it's manufacturing, you've got to, you've got to train them. You've got to train them. And most people got computer skills. But you've got to train these people if they coming in manufacturing. And it's good skill. I've done it all my life. But you've got to have training. I don't care what you do, you've got to have training, you've got to have training. If you're in sales, you've got to be, walk up to somebody, say, can I help you? And if I was in a store, I would know what they had and where it was. You go in some of these stores, you've got, but when you're in a store, boy, you've got to know what you're doing. And that's where you get your big bucks. If you know what you're doing and you're good at it, you can do it. I don't know about, so, maybe television, maybe television, appliances. They pay good, they used to pay good. I don't know. They shipped them all season, tax, tax. And the big, big guys wasn't happy, they wanted to be greedy. And they don't think about putting a little person out of job. When you put 25 people out of job, that 25 people are going to be hurting job, jobs. What am I going to do? You've just got so many typists, so many drivers. I don't know, I don't know. But you got, but, but they need to be trained. And it's not hard to be trained on these tools and stuff.
Okay, appreciate that. Any further questions? Good for this section here. We'll go to closing remarks. Bill, I think we'll start with you. Two minutes just to wrap up your ideas for us today.
Well, this town is good. They need jobs, they need jobs. And I don't have it. They need transportation. They need police. I've had, I called, I had a prowler. Well, what is a prowler? What is prowler doing? I started chewing nuts. I said, making sounds outside the house. I called one night and he come out, flashed the light. And I had the, then the police come, well, what is a prowler? I said, where are you? Then the police, a couple of years ago, they changed their number. You used to call 442-6131, get the police. Now you got puncher, you got puncher. And it needs to be overhauled. It needs to be overhauled. You need a, you need good police. And, oh, well, we hit. Well, they had a fight a couple of years ago in Royal Street Park. I called, waited, waited. So I thought that's enough, I'm going out. I broke out. Police coming? You've got to take it on your own. You've got, each neighbor, you've got to look at your, hmm. You've got to take interest. I've never seen so many people, well, what are you doing? They don't want to get involved, they don't. And, and each person, you've got to live that. You've got to know your neighbors. I know my neighbors. We used to have Neighborhood Association. I've been trying to get it back. You've got to know your neighbors, you've got to look out for each other. You've got to look out for each other. And that's the best thing. Know your, know what your neighbor's driving. Know, know, know. Have a, have a block party every once in a while. I sit outside. I used to sit outside until it got dark. I dozed off in my chair. But I do, I'm the only person sitting outside.
Yeah. Okay, Bill, appreciate that. Jenny, closing remarks for two minutes, please.
Thank you. You know, Columbia is a community that I love and I know many of us also love. And I am excited to be running for First Ward City Council. I really do want to be a strong voice for the residents of the First Ward and the stakeholders. So I look forward to continuing to communicate with each of you. And, and thank you so much for coming.
Great, thank you.
How many of you people are in the First Ward? From eight to five.
Yes, the First Ward touches, I would say, every Colombian, every person.
It's actually much of downtown and there's kind of an arm that goes over past the mall.
Oh, everything that you love in this town is in the First Ward. The university is in the First Ward, the downtown is in the First Ward, all of the businesses. It goes all the way out now. The reapportionment added the arc, the farmer's market, the mall, the Super Walmart, Smith and Middle School, West Middle School, you name it. It's all a part of the, yeah.
It don't go south, it don't go south.
It don't go south.
It don't go north.
Six, six wards, so, okay. That'll conclude our candid forum for today. Thanks for coming out today.